I'm going to go ahead and hand everything over to Dr. McKay.
Good afternoon, everyone. We have many topics on our agenda today, but we really want to focus on the first one first, which is the board's CIP request, which they will vote on at our October Board of Education meeting. So the board received a draft CIP at their September meeting and are scheduled to vote on it at the October meeting, and this allows us to get timely the information to the county staff and the state IAC. Today, we're going to want to focus on some key highlights, in particular, the planned additions for Freedom Elementary and Sykesville Middle. Importantly to note, the conditions have changed since the board made the decision to move forward with additions, so that's going to be something important for us to talk about today. And we want to make sure that we're transparent with the community about those conditions having changed somewhat from the last time we looked at this to today. So before we get into the Board of Education timeline, I think we have everybody here now, and I just wanted to say welcome to Commissioner Susan Krebs, who just became a commissioner, and this is her first meeting with us. So, welcome and thank you.
First of many, in different capacities.
That's right, in this capacity, the first one. I think everybody knows everybody, so we're going to move on to slide three, which is our Board of Education CIP timeline. And this is just so that everybody has an idea of how this works. It really starts in May and June with our EFMP, and this is our 10-year planning document. It contains the age and the condition index for each of our buildings. So I know that some folks feel like, oh, do we know that this building needs something? Or are we aware that there's something going wrong in another building? And the answer to that is usually yes, because it is all housed in our EFMP, and we know the conditions of each of our buildings, and they are prioritized accordingly. Then in September and October, we bring the CIP for discussion and then action, and this allows us to get it to the county staff in time for them to prep for the budget process and to the IAC in time for the General Assembly. And Ted appreciates if we get it to him timely, right Ted? Technically, it could be revised later, but basically, it can be complicated, so we want to get it to you as quickly as possible. So for next slide, major highlights. Here you can see the major highlights on which we wanted to focus our discussion today. As we've moved through the design process for Freedom and Sykesville, and we're mostly at the end of that now for the additions, we have clearer budget estimates, and there is a shift in local costs on these projects, which we'll cover in greater detail for each of the projects in a few minutes. As I mentioned, there are also changes to some of the factors and conditions that led to the decision to pursue the two additions, and we're going to try to cover those conditions as well. Next slide. So just as a review, the board actions on these projects up to this date. As enrollment projections were increasing, the Board of Ed formed the Freedom Area Redistricting Committee, otherwise known as FERC. And it was suspended due to the pandemic. And then, when we reconvened, the enrollment projections at that time led us to expand the FERC into a broader regional Southern Area Redistricting Committee. And we were looking at the utilization for the whole region in a pre-K through eight manner. Ultimately, the Board of Education reviewed the options and explored two additions. The feasibility studies were commissioned in 2022, and the projects were included in the CIP in 2023. Since then, design has been progressing, and we're now at the point where we must decide on whether we're going to move forward with the construction or not. So to go into the Freedom Elementary addition in a little more detail.
Yeah, Mr. Prokop and I are going to try to walk through the remaining slides, and just real quick before we do, in your packets, you have the documents that Dr. McKay referenced. So the really thick document is the Educational Facilities Master Plan that was most recently approved by the Board of Ed in June of '25, and the smaller document is the summary of the CIP request that the board heard for discussion in September and is scheduled to return in October for vote. And then, you have the slideshow, and then you have behind, I think in your packet, it should be right behind the PowerPoint presentation, you have a front-back chart that we'll talk specifically to, but it sort of shows the change in enrollment projections at the elementary and middle levels in the Southern area over time. So we'll be referring to those as we go, and as we refer, when we refer to that, to those charts, Mr. Henderson will put those charts on the screen and switch back and forth.
So just in the way of some general information regarding the overall, the two projects that we're most concerned with, Freedom and Sykesville. Freedom is, it's two additions and five classroom spaces. The main concern with Freedom, besides the discussion items we'll be getting into a little bit later, is this, the increase of $1.3 million. The reason that's occurring is because there's a requirement for sprinkler systems, regardless of the size of the, of an addition now. And the reason it's so, such a high number for relatively small additions is because of the low water pressure in the area, requires a fire pump. That fire pump then requires to be connected to the emergency generator, and the emergency generator is too small. So what we have is that's added cost, it's just dominoes falling in terms of the need for that sprinkler system. So that's where that $1.3 million comes from. And in terms of the project itself, one thing I wanted to mention was that if you think about this project, the additions will house the folks that are in the six classrooms, relocatable classrooms that are currently on the site. We will get into a little more detail in terms of the, in terms of the project specifically, but if there's any questions anybody has in general, I'd be happy to answer them. And then, if we could go to, let's go to the next slide.
Go to Sykesville?
Yeah, yeah. So we just thought I'd do the general items first, and then we could go to the discussion items, because a lot of them overlap for the two, for the two projects. So Sykesville Middle is a larger project, 10 classrooms. The reason for the impact to the county here isn't, isn't like what happened at Freedom. It's not a, it's not an addition or addition to the project or a scope change. What happened was in FY '26, the anticipated state funding was based on the enrollments at that time. In that time, we've seen that we've had two successive years of reduced enrollments. And this year, what we're looking at, at least for the first three weeks of this, this school year, we were continuing that trend. So that downward trend, we took, as we're trying to justify state participation seven years out, that's, that will now affect that seventh year, such that we can't justify this, this $10 million, 10.3 million that we originally thought in '26. In '27, here, we're, we've lost about 3.1, we're down to about 7.1 million to an anticipated cost, but that's only if we can justify to the state a waiver requirement for square footage that has to do with the difference between middle school and junior high school models, which I'm not going to try to even get into, but also the adjacent schools, the two adjacent schools that the state would consider us moving boundary lines to move students to. So if we can get those two to happen, we would be looking at a best-case scenario, the 7.1 million. If that doesn't happen, this, these numbers get, get far worse. Now, again, the overall budget for the project hasn't changed, but the anticipated state participation has, and that's reflected in the fiscal year '27 budget request.
Back to conditions.
Yeah.
I'm actually going backward to slide seven now.
It's the way we planned it, to try to throw everybody off. So the, so if there is, the first thing is the increased county cost, and I can stop there to, you know, I gave a brief explanation, I know just a few sentences, but is there any other, are there any other questions regarding that?
Regarding this, on Sykesville, the state rate of capacity versus local capacity, I know why we've done it years ago, but I think we're the only county in the state that does that now. Is it worth it for the extra cost to continue with the, using local capacity for construction? It's a philosophical issue, but I think we're the only county that's left, doing it that way, the model. Is there any way we could, I don't know how the other, I don't know how the other school systems do it, but it makes us not have state participation for our middle schools.
It does reduce the state participation, but this is an instructional model that's really kind of outside my, my realm.
All right, it's just a question, it's just a bigger question for down the road, because that is, it's significant. We rarely get money for middle schools because we use a different, we use local capacity versus state rate of capacity, and they look at state. And we rarely, we never got money for Shiloh, Little Bit, we got money for Oklahoma, but even for these additions, I think they're always looking at, at local capacity, their state rate of capacity is what they, they give us money based on. And, you know, I'm not sure what part of that is this, but it's something to think about. That's how we teach, and maybe teachers, maybe we could build some offices, I don't know, that just, it'd be nice to talk about it again someday.
Anything else? Okay. So if we move on to site constraints, this really pertains mostly to Freedom. Freedom is about half of the size we would build a typical elementary school on today. It's, it has its challenges, not, not just for constructing the additions, but it's actually, its daily routine is challenged with the small site, reduced parking, or limited parking. And also, some of the site constraints also will cause us to have to move the existing playground, for instance, wasn't put in that long ago. We're going to have to move it and, and put it back in place. The topography is such that we're going to end up with retaining walls and things like that. It's not the end of the world, it's not a deal breaker, it's just so that everybody kind of knows that those are some of the, some of what we're dealing with on that site. I didn't know if anybody had any questions or wanted to.
I had a question. For Freedom, I know we were looking at possibly doing the expanded bus loop, because again, the, you know, the issue with parking and buses coming in and out, with so very little space for the buses to maneuver. Is our current plan still including that expanded bus loop, or is that something that's gone and off the table now because of the size restraint, constraints?
Probably. At this point, I know that we had talked about the possibility of making those improvements. I don't know how far that's, that's gotten, because that would necessitate us pulling the trigger and taking the relocatables out. We would be, we would hesitate to do that until everything was completed, we understood fully what was going to, how the school was going to operate and how it was going to run. So there would be some, we're, we're still sort of debating how that would happen. We want to do that, certainly.
Right, yeah, I'm just concerned about the safety issues with so many cars, so many buses, everything going on all at once, but, okay, thank you.
Mr. Henderson, could you load the elementary projection charts onto the screen?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I jumped the bullet. So in, for SARC, the decisions that were made from the 2022 projections, let's see, we're on the, that's the middle school, elementary, okay, good.
Yeah, you're in elementary.
And the decisions that were made at that time gave us, actually, if you could move to 20, move to the 23. Yes. So the decisions between, the information that we're looking at in 2022 in SARC and then the 23 when we presented to the Board of Ed, you can see that the trend, that negative 189, that's additional seats in the contiguous areas, was showing, the trend was reducing. There were fewer seats as we were going to the board with our recommendations from, from SARC. But what's happened in the meantime, as we've been going through the planning process, scroll it down to 25, Bob, thanks, you can see that the, the trend has gone in the, the other direction now. So we're, at least the information that we have, again, three weeks into the school year here, you know, is indicating, in addition to last year's trend downward, this is going to show a line that's going to go, if we go out to 2029, which was the five years out that the SARC committee determined, five years out to look and to base their decisions on, you can see that that trend is calling, is showing more seats available in the contiguous schools.
Just a couple pieces of information to note for this discussion. The way enrollment figures work with the state is that on September 30 of every year, every school system in Maryland has to send sort of the overall enrollment of the school system to the state, and they process that and eventually certify the official enrollment. On October 31 of every year, every school system in Maryland has to spend, has to send the enrollment figures for the special populations of students, like special needs students, compensatory ed students, ESOL students, or we now call them multilingual learner or ML students. So there's two reports. The big one of all kids is September 30, the other groups of students is 1031, and then sometime usually in late November, the state certifies the official enrollments for all of the counties. What you're seeing on the screen or at the bottom of your chart is unofficial, we had asked, I had asked Mr. Kane, our facilities planner, Mr. Kane had a family emergency, or he'd be here, he sends his regrets and regards. I asked Bill to go ahead and unofficially look at the schools in the region, so that we could have a more up-to-date view than the, the last official enrollment projections, which were from last school year in May. So this is as up-to-date as we can be. It's not, it's not quite official, but it should be pretty close to what ultimately gets, gets validated by the state. And so I think, you know, the overall point that Ray is making here, of all the conditions on this last slide, of all the factors, the two biggest changes come in increased county cost and in enrollment projections and what that could mean for the projects. And so, whereas when we were looking at basically no, or nine available seats in the region at the time the Board of Ed voted to move these projects forward as capital additions, we thought the projections were that there would be really no seats in the area. Now, two years of enrollment changes, and we're looking at over 300 seats in the region. And so that's a pretty, a pretty sharp turnaround pretty quickly.
And that'll certainly affect what the state gives for aid to the schools.
Especially for the Sykesville project, yes, sir. And Sykes, I don't know, Bob, if you want to flip it or not, but Sykesville's on the back, I don't think you need to flip, well, you can flip it, Bob, and you can see, you can see where the numbers are looking, looking there as well. Two other things to note, and I'm not going to ask Bob to keep flipping back and forth, a bullet point Ray is going to get to eventually is the county adequate public facility ordinance and how that factors into this joint discussion. It is worth noting that at the elementary level, there's not a scenario yet, at least based on even the most up-to-date projections, that Freedom is not above 120%. Freedom does remain above 120%, but we've been operating Freedom a long time at, at a higher utilization. So as the boards think this out and discuss it, you know, the school is, the school would be operating in the future in a better position than it's been in for the last few years if we didn't move the addition forward, and certainly if we moved the addition forward, there's, there's, there's benefits there as well. At the, at the middle level, there was never a scenario, well, actually, there was a scenario where I think Sykesville would have eclipsed 120% in the 23 projections, but there's not a, there's not a projection scenario now where either of the middle schools would, would ever be over 120%. So I know Ray wanted to do that bullet, or that bullet scheduled for later, but while we have these on the screen, I thought we'd, we'd mention that. Bob, do you want to go back to the PowerPoint?
Can I ask a question real quick?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, and again, and I know it's not in play now, but it might be later, the charter school that might come in. I mean, if it goes through, hopefully we'll attract some more people to the school system, those folks at homeschool or private school. But have we thought about how a charter school might affect these numbers? Would that, I mean, I mean, I know it's very difficult to do that, but, but how, you know, will the state, you know, consider that even though they're not responsible for the capital side of the charter school, how does that work into it, and how does that play into it? And could that, could that help us, or could that hurt us even more? Can you kind of give us your gut thought on that?
Do you know, to your first point, Mr. Whistler, it's very hard, until we have a sense of who they may attract, I really can't put much together. The summer before they would open would be a time where we could really see, are they, are they attracting students already in our schools? And if so, are they students from the schools in this region, or are they broader than that? Are they bringing in students who are presently maybe homeschooled or private school, which, which wouldn't really matter for the capital part of this? So that's, we're probably about a year out of knowing enough to really understand what that impact would be.
Okay. But that's the risk on the table, knowing and not knowing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The next, the next bullet we wanted to talk about was Blueprint, which has a little less meaning now than it did a few years ago when the board was trying to sort this out and make a decision on the additions. And everyone, I think, is aware of our trials and, and efforts with the waiver from the AIB. There was a point leading up until, well, now, I guess, or April, during the waiver process, where our anticipation of Blueprint funding requirements or compliance requirements was going to be that there would be a pretty sizable shift in resources from certain schools to other schools, and many of these schools would have been those mostly impacted in terms of sort of resources shifting out of these schools to other schools. And when I say resources, generally I mean staff, people. Our work since the waiver, which is, we're not yet to the finish line, but we're still very much working on a, on an every week basis with the AIB's consultants, indicates to us that, that the outcome of this process will not see the kind of impact we were anticipating. And I want to be very careful, because I don't want to say that there will be no movement of resources from school A to school B. I think there, there's still the possibility that there will be some shifting resources, but we don't foresee that the outcome's going to be a scenario where a single school would be so devastated by the, by the number of teachers being moved out of that school to a different school, that it would, that it would have the kind of, that it would impact your thinking the way at one time we thought it might be on whether to go forward with these projects. Meaning, at one time, did it make sense, was it going to make sense to build an addition if there was, if there were no teachers to fill those classrooms in the addition? That was sort of something in the back of our minds a couple of years ago. That seems much less likely now that we would be moving the large numbers of teachers that we at one time anticipated. I can't really, I can't really go deeper on that, but I think in the next month or so, there probably will be a report from the consulting company, and we can try to make that make a little more sense. For now, I think the key takeaway we would want to impart is, the concern about Blueprint is not, not the same level of concern by any means that it was a couple of years ago when we were talking about this.
Yeah, and John, also, just in listening at the AIB meeting last week, that was, to mirror what you're saying, that was sort of the tone, where they're very open, talking to different counties, what do you all need, you know, that sort of thing, the community, it seems like it's a good place, so I agree.
The work's been, the work's been well-received by us, hopefully by them, and it's been productive and effective, I think. And we watched your, your meeting with the delegation not too long ago and saw the discussion on Blueprint there, and I thought that everyone involved, Delegate Stanko in particular, did a really nice summary of, of where that work is, and, you know, more or less, he, he had a pretty good handle on it, so that was, it was kind of impressive. That's, it's, it's about, it's about the accounting practice of Blueprint, and it's about sort of this, what Delegate Stanko referred to as a base school model, and how that could be retooled to make, to make the necessary changes much less impactful than, than originally thought.
John, I have a question. I see you say reconsideration of other options, the boundary adjustments, and normally when we talk boundary adjustments, it's for all grades, we've changed the boundaries. But I was reading the report a couple months ago, thank you for sending it, about special education, and I, you know, we have regional schools for special education. Has it ever been considered to have a regional school for nursery school or kindergarten, just to help with the region of being Leybe, Eldersburg, and Freedom? The places that have a couple of, some extra space, just they're very close to each other, because they haven't come to school yet, you understand what I'm saying? If we, would it, I know right now you say we're doing everything, and it's working with 100, under 120%, and it's working fine, and that might not be necessary. But when you, you know, given the fact that the state money's going to keep going down because we have additional capacity right next door, and instead of doing a boundary adjustment, which is always difficult, because everybody loves their school, and I love it too, but you could possibly, I don't know if it would work, think about it for special population, which could be pre-K and kindergarten. Kids haven't come to school yet, and then the other part of that is, I mean, that's one of the reasons that we're having space problems, because we've added all-day pre-K, and we've added, not all-day pre-K, we've added pre-K and all-day kindergarten over time, and those things have taken up space. I know we added the kindergarten addition, but given the fact that there is space, let's see.
Yeah, Eldersburg at 79%.
Yeah, there's 79% of capacity, so that, you know, that is, that's some space. And there, actually, their difference actually went down, and, you know, just looking at, there's not any new housing going up, you never can tell specifically, but it seems like that might be the trend for that school. It's just something to think about, and I just saw it with special education about the, it could be a regional nursery school, regional kindergarten, and I do know that up in Boston, where my kids go to school in that area, they do a lot of schools that are a couple grades, they, they adjust around to local schools by grade. They have a K to K, K, they don't have a pre-K, they have kindergarten first, second, third, schools just with two grades. So they've learned to sort of think outside the box in their different towns, and it made me think about possibly, if, if we buy some time, I mean, my, my problem with adding one to Freedom is it's a 70-year-old school, it's on the list of, as you said, the list of schools that need to be replaced at some point, and we need to think about that point. And if we could somehow get ourselves to there and take this investment of all these dollars that are declining because of, you know, the state funding is a direct correlation between need, you know, do you have adjacent schools and, you know, the declining, declining enrollment, both.
Sure.
So that's not, I don't see that getting better, but if you could take that money, you know, whatever, and put it toward thinking about getting some of these other projects done, and starting to put a new Freedom Elementary on the radar as a replacement, instead of investing more money in a school, it's like investing, you know, money in my, you get to be 90 years old, you know, at some point, I shouldn't use that scenario, you understand what I'm saying?
Right.
Did that scenario come up with the redistricting committee about, or even, do we use any of the private pre-Ks? I know Wesley Freedom is a big feeder in, great schools, a lot of the kids come from there. there. Have we had the discussion about letting, allowing some of the kids to stay at one, one of the local providers, just for a while?
So, couple, couple of responses, and I think ultimately I'll defer to either Mr. Shokne or Dr. McCabe on the program question, but our approach to, to pre-K under Blueprint has been to ultimately try to build out at least two classrooms, two full-day pre-K classrooms per elementary school in time, either using available existing space depending on the school or, or through additions. Freedom due to utilization has had no, has not been a pre-K site. I believe it's our only elementary
Correct.
... school that is not a pre-K site presently. This planned addition would, would, would add pre-K at Freedom. In the, in the broader CIP, we have a phased approach to building out the two classrooms per, per elementary school across the system. And so, we're, we're kind of at the construction part, looking at the construction part of Phase One, which is six schools, Ray, I believe.
Six.
Six. And then there would be a Phase Two and, and we'd see where we are before we get to a Phase Three at some point. So, we have not had a conversation about building a regional pre-K site anywhere.
No, I don't mean building it. I'm not saying building it. I'm saying using addition, using current space temporarily. And you said Freedom's the only school that doesn't have pre-K?
The only elementary that doesn't have a pre-K, yeah.
And we do run a, a, a special education program for three and four-year-olds out of Carrolltown Elementary. And we have five regional special education schools that run as a comprehensive school but also run one or more programs. Carrolltown serves the students in that South Carroll area. Winfield to the west also has a, what we call our, our early childhood special needs or our prep programs at, at those two schools for three and four eligible students. That's not all students with disabilities. Those are students whose, whose needs are greater and couldn't be met in a comprehensive pre-K program. Law requires us to, to provide services in that least restrictive environment possible. So, if we can, we do it in the pre-K. If we can't do it in the pre-K, we utilize one of our prep programs that exist.
But that doesn't include kids that are at high risk? It's just?
These are, yeah, you're right. These are identified students with, with, that currently have either an IEP or, or an IFSP.
I'm just wondering what the demand, I'm just trying to think of how to get us to a point, are there other options we could think of that we've never done before to get us to a point to be able to look forward to replacing the school that's going to be needed at some point? I don't know where that would look. Because you're, you're saying that we're not going to maybe fill it until 2027? Yeah, it was 25 right now. It seemed like a far, far away, but it's not that far away. You understand what I'm saying? I'm just, you know, how to, I mean, maybe they're fine with saying with the 120%, but, but we're not offering the pre-K now. So, what's happening to those kids? The kids that qualify for pre-K, are they just not going anywhere or they still staying at the private pre-Ks?
They're, 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 they're attending in the, in that region or in that area. Those income-eligible students were required by law to find a seat for, so they are in, they're in other areas in that, around, around Freedom Elementary.
So, we're taking care of the income-eligible
Yes.
... right now. And, and do we bus those income-eligible
Correct.
... other schools? So, we're, we're compliant from that point of view? So, we're just trying to make it for everybody?
Yep.
Are all the other schools compliant for everyone? I mean, do we have space for all pre-K now in the other schools?
We, yes. We, we even have a few seats available throughout the system.
Yep. And we have a tiered system where after we've met all the income-eligible students, where we'll look at students with special needs, for example, or other special circumstances in which we'll bring in other, other students, yeah.
Sometimes that may result in a parent choice because it's not compulsory. So, it could be, we can offer you a seat at this school instead of the one closest to you, and a parent could say yes or no. And so, you know, that could be an issue. You asked about private pre-K, and that's a whole different Blueprint conversation. It's been a struggle across Maryland to sort of build out the private partnership. We have, we have some participating partners, but not, not very many.
Four.
We're not four. We have four private.
And that's after a lot of work to
I have a local To, to this district that they could serve this
They're in Carroll County.
I mean, to Freedom, I mean, somewhere in South Carroll.
Yeah, I'll have to check and see.
I'm just asking because we do have, I don't know if they want to do it, I'm not speaking for them, but, you know, most of the kids go there now. A lot of them go there now. So, they should sort of be staying there, but it'd be on, you know, it would help, it would help free us up. It's just a thought, I'm not, they promised us when Blueprint was being discussed that we would have the ability to use, use the current providers, but it's become very restrictive and, as you said, difficult. But that was a promise that was made to the
The private providers, there is not a ton of incentive for a private provider to participate.
Opportunities are way too
Yeah, there's a lot of requirements for those private providers.
If their business model's successful and they're full, is it worth it for them to make the transition?
Well, they're not going to be full. Once you start offering it at the school system, it's, it's not, there's no charge. So, I think their model's going to go away. They're going to have to focus on three-year-olds instead of four-year-olds because now they're going to go to public schools. Just a thought to consider.
And that's a, that's sort of a different vein than, than how we were presenting this bullet, but, but that's good conversation. And a, a different way of, as you, both boards unpack this thing, if you didn't move forward with the, with the projects at this point, or if you put them on pause for a period of time, which could, I suppose, be an outcome, there, but the county's APFO conditions remain an, an issue or, or an obstacle in someone's view. There is adjacency at Eldersburg that you could, in a very limited redistricting manner, solve the, solve Freedom being at 120% or higher. However, as I've heard Commissioner Kyler say many ti, or I'll say this differently because I don't, I don't want to try to quote a commissioner and be wrong. You can, you can sometimes get some folks to have a conversation with you and be okay with redistricting, but not usually if their child ends up being, one of the children being redistrict.
John, the secret is to not use that word. I've been through county-wide redistricting, never again. Never again. But the, you, the word I would use is like we're doing with the special, is a set, regional center, and it could be a regional center of two schools. It's better than the word redistricting. And again, kids haven't, I'm just saying, they haven't come to school yet. One of my concerns, if, if we put on, keep putting, investing money into a facility, the ability or the rationale for actually doing a new school is going to keep getting pushed off. And we have all these other limitations, as you mentioned, the, the, there's a lot of space limitations, there's transportation limitations, you can't have a field trip without getting like bussed over because there's nowhere to park. So, there's a lot of functional, so if you put another eight million or whatever into something, it's going to be harder to justify it sooner than later. It's just, I would think, so it's just
Yeah. And I think unless you want to have a conversation from your perspective about APFO, we've probably said all that we would want to say on APFO. So, I guess, I think, you know, we, the, the conditions for Sykesville are similar. There's fewer of them than with Freedom, so we're not going to repeat that on, on the Sykesville slide. I guess a concluding thought and then to have your, your discussion for us would be, from our perspective at the Board of Ed or the staff level, we don't believe there's an affordability question. The county would, in our opinion, I can't tell if Ted's happier said with what I'm saying, but the county, from our perspective, would have the capital revenue available to proceed with the additions. But what we did want to make sure we had before the Board of Ed comes back to, to take this up as an action item was a meaningful conversation, to be clear that conditions have changed very much so, particularly with enrollment and also with increased local cost. They're, they're trending very different in terms of enrollment than they were in '22 and '23. And, and it seemed like, you know, we've completed design and we think that that was helpful and productive, and, and the, the design money is accounted for. But before we proceed to construction, it, it felt like this was the perfect timing to have this conversation with the two boards.
Do you know, I'm, I'm sorry.
Question on that, I'm sorry. So, I guess, what's the ramification if you put Freedom and Sykesville on hold? You've already, I think, designed it. And what would your recommendation be for the pre-K expansions? Continue with them?
I think, yeah. So, in the bigger picture, I think we want to get through Phase One and Two and then see, see where we are in terms of capacity and, and, you know, Commissioner Krebs pointed, and I'm trying to, I'm proud that I got that right because I thought I was going to say Delegate Krebs every time. Commissioner Krebs pointed out the state is sort of massaging that a little bit and where the system should be focused versus pro, private providers, but we'd like to sort of get through the first couple of phases and see. I forgot your first question, Commissioner Kyler.
What, what's the ramification if you put Freedom and Sykesville on hold? Is, what, what do you lose?
Well, we, we've spent the design money, so I guess that's a factor. In terms of operating the school, the schools are operating. We're not going to be unable to continue to operate the schools. And then I think another outcome is for, for the county is what does this mean for development in APFO and that whole conversation, which isn't really our conversation, but it's, it's, you know, sort of a factor in the room today.
And, and you, you opened up the door, so my, my question would be, and I used to argue with Commissioner Rustine all the time, what if Carroll County said, across the street, said, "We don't care about your overcrowded or under-crowded, that's your problem. What's your guys' perspective if we just said, if, if we had 100 students, your job's to educate them and you'll figure it out"? Is that a problem?
That would not be a problem for us. No.
It might make you use the four-letter redistrict word, who knows?
I, I mean, yeah, we, we could live without, without those
That requirement.
Yeah, without that requirement.
I have, I have a couple of questions. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Commissioner Kyler.
No, no, I'm done.
Oh, good, okay. A couple of comments, and you'll have to forgive me. I'm, in a little bit of a sense, Dr. Malvo and I are coming in at the 11th hour on some of these decisions, so please correct me if I misspeak. I, am I, I'm understanding correctly that since when Sark originally met, these projections for enrollment were, were grow, were steadily growing. And now, what's actually coming to fruition is much different than what was anticipated. I'm concerned about the size of Freedom's footprint and just piggybacking on what Commissioner Krebs said, it's already a hardship to get in and out of that school off Route 32 for parents and buses. I understand that an addition could be built and we've done the feasibility study and it's certainly possible, but not particularly ideal on that site. So, the location, the existing traffic challenges, and now with the projected decrease of enrollment, I'm, I question why we're moving forward with this project at this time. I question whether it's the most effective use of our resources, especially for Freedom, but I can kind of go through some of my notes for Sykesville as well, but I'm leaning in that same direction for Sykesville, given that the state funding is now in doubt and we're having these declining enrollment projections. I feel as if we should take a breath and take a ba, pause and see what other options are ahead of us. I understand that we have invested, and now we understand that we can build these additions, but I don't want us to fall into the sunk cost fallacy and just keep moving forward because we've already spent what we have. And then just to count, to follow up on what Mr. Whistler said about the charter school, although there's, we can't say a whole lot right now, am I correct in assuming that if anything, it's just going to have enrollment further decrease the local schools? It wouldn't cause any kind of increases. So, it could potentially be another factor that we see less students at these schools. So, I'm just proposing, I feel like we need to take a pause and see what's what.
So, that, that, the thought on the charter school to me is viable and it makes some sense. I just can't say with any certainty where those kids will come from. To your, to your final point or culminating point, I think that's why we were, we were happy to have this meeting and this timing. And maybe it goes back to what Commissioner Kyler said about what are the ramifications? The ramifications are that we would operate the schools as we are. APFO would be whatever it still is or, or any changes they would make. I, I, I don't know that it has to be a permanent decision at your October meeting. It doesn't need to be a, we were going to build them and now we're never going to build them. It could be a, let's see what two more years of official enrollments look like before we revisit this decision because your, the design work is still valid and, and it's, and again, to us, it's not an affordability issue. It's just, is this money best spent in this manner right now versus any other of the things in the backlog of CIP projects, which could be roofs, HVAC systems, other, other things? And then to your first, your first point, Board Member Zimmer, yes. Enrollments were projecting that there were not going to be any available seats in the region, and so if redistricting were going to be the solution or the outcome, the projections at those times had us redistricting into Westminster, in particular Mechanicsville and maybe others. I think at the middle level, West Middle would have, would have come into play. And so, the Board of Ed at that time had a lot of presentations, a lot of information and a lot of discussion about what are reasonable ride times on buses and what makes sense for communities. And that led them to the decision to do the additions. And now what we're seeing is some of those factors, most especially enrollment, seem to have reversed themselves.
Right. So, again, it's back to, is it the most effective use of our resources? And then I just had three really quick clarifying questions, so, and one I just lost. The second one is for the, oh, I remember, I'm sorry. Dr. McCabe, just confirming, you said that we can continue to operate these schools successfully even though, especially with Freedom, when we're at the 120-plus?
Yes.
This, the second question was for Commissioner Kyler. Do you feel like the commissioners could work around the APFO? Is that a sticking point for you guys right now?
I can't speak for the other commissioners. I've, I've heard rumors that planning's going to recommend it to us, but I haven't heard officially, so. And unless you poll each of us now, I'm not sure I can answer that question.
I won't put you on this
I'm only one vote and sometimes they don't even, it's like when I was over here, so the ladies wouldn't even let me vote.
Hi. And I'll tell you, the reason it was put in place and in effect, we want to make sure we're making good decisions for the long term. It was put in place because it forces us to do something at some point.
Yeah.
We want to look at overcrowding now. I mean, I used to sleep with these things under my pillow 30 years ago. And my kids were at Sykesville when we had a whole seventh grade in portables. They were Freedom, Liberty, 156% of capacity. So, I know, and my kids have survived and they've, they made it out okay. That doesn't mean it's ideal. So, we want to force us to be looking ahead. And if this was a school that was Eldersburg or Lynden, I would say, go for it. But we're talking about a school that needs to be replaced soon. It's sooner than late. I'm not saying next year, but it needs to be on that radar screen. We need to start finding a site. We need to start thinking about it. And so, it's, it's on the list of schools that's, it's 70 years old. And this happened with Charles Carroll. That's why I'm asking if we could somehow get by temporarily. I wouldn't want to get rid of APFO altogether, but it could be an exception because this is the accommodations we either would make or live with temporarily.
We can, we can get by temporarily. You know, as we've said, we've gotten by, you know, in Freedom for a long time like this. And while it's not ideal, we can do it, especially if we have a plan to move forward in the future.
And remember, when my kids were at Freedom, we didn't have any air conditioning. And when they were at Sykesville, they had no air conditioning. So, that made it even worse. And now, everybody at least is comfortable. But it's just, we try to think through some of these, these issues.
I skipped Commissioner Vigliotti earlier, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's all right. So, just a couple of questions that kind of tie into what Commissioner Kyler, Commissioner Krebs and Board Member Zimmer have asked. So, what, what is it that accounts for the decline in enrollment? I mean, is it something of a natural, natural variation? Is it the fact that we have an aging population? And, and you go, going on of what my colleagues have all said, I mean, is it, is it better to hedge against a future projected increase by moving ahead with something? Or as Board Member Zimmer said, do we take a pause on it? I mean, it, like, I think back about 20 years ago, I think the term at the time was used to describe like a bubble of, of students that came through the system. Couple of new schools were built, there was some expansion that happened, and then a couple of schools were decommissioned and sold. And then so, I guess the question is, you know, what accounts for this, this fluctuation in, in the enrollment?
So we are not demographers, not any one of us, not even Mr. Kane, who, who is their planner and can't be here. But what we would tell you, our analysis is, and, and we've been spending some time, really the last two years, trying to pick it apart. It seems to be that the, the last few years prior where we had seen some growth, we sort of plateaued and then grew. We were seeing tremendous net migration, positive net migration into the county. So families were moving here with, with kids and that seems to have turned off. And so, you know, Commissioner, it's, it's really as simple as if you, if you look at a fifth grade class size today, that's going to be sixth grade tomorrow. For a couple of years now, that fifth grade is being replaced by a much smaller, by a smaller kindergarten incoming class. And when Bill does enrollment projections, we, we know the number of students or number of kids who were born in Carroll County. Like there's a lot of things that concretely we know. The one sort of significant variable is what I'm calling net migration. I don't know if that's the right term, but, but.
That sounds good.
Who has moved here additionally with, with school age students. And we were seeing some of that and then we stopped seeing that in the last two cycles.
And Commissioner Vigliotti, I, I wonder if, if it has to do with the higher interest rates? And so people staying in their houses longer and not, you know, they may want to move to Carroll County. But, you know, they don't want to take a loan out with a higher interest rate. I know I've heard that anecdotally from a lot of people, but I can't, there's, there's nothing concrete that I can prove that with right now.
You know, what, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? Right now on the plans, everybody's doing over 55 communities because of the APFO for Freedom. And I don't know if it's for Sykesville or not, but, and it's very, very advantageous right now to do over 55. We changed some things in the code and it makes it very advantageous. So I don't see right now, unless we change that, that we're going to see a lot of new growth of families. Because most people aren't over, can't have kids in over 55 communities. We're talking 800 of them. So most of our new growth that is planned is not single family homes for families. So I don't, they could drop, this, this all could drop off tomorrow if we continue with the direction that we're moving with, the kinds of homes we're building. Because we're not building things for families to move here. I just wanted to make a comment on the Facility Master Plan you sent it to me a couple of months ago. This plan is like the best I've ever seen it. But just the quality of what's gone into it, it has improved year after year. We used to get enrollments that, there, it was like 20 pages long, but just the evaluation, it's, it's, it's hard to do, but I understand how you do it. But it's excellent, the, the way you guys looked at this school. It's just, it's very well done. So it keeps getting improved and improved. And I thank you for that because it gives us much more comprehensive information to look at versus simple numbers that we used to get that didn't mean a lot. These, it's very good. So thank you. Whoever, Bill, not here.
Kane, we will, we will convey that to him. Thank you.
Back, back to Freedom a minute. You guys seem comfortable putting it on hold and you've been dealing with a long time. The 20% overcrowded doesn't count the portables. And the portables have been working and you're okay with lunch, you're okay with gym, you're okay with the, the common facilities for the students. So with the portables, you're, you're kind of comfortable. Is that, that good?
Yes. I mean, we, you know, as we've said, it's not ideal, but this is how we've been living for a long time now. I know that the, certainly the staff and the parents and the students at Freedom, you know, might say differently. And I completely understand that because we want everyone to be able to be inside the building. But it, it is, it's, it's working right now.
Yeah, I appreciate Ms. Zimmer's comment about the possibility of waiting. Is it the good use of money? You know, the comptroller came out, I think in the last several days, saying that a lot of our schools are aging. We need more money put into that. I think a big thing driving the modernization at Freedom is the pre-K requirement. And also the pre-K expansion for our schools over three phases for our 22 elementary schools. If we could somehow, and again, I don't foresee it happening, it's an election year. But if we could lobby the state legislature to scale back and ease the pre-K requirements for Blueprint? Because that's soaking up a lot of capital money around the state and, and here. You know, lowering the requirements for people that will step forward and help us out in the pre-K realm on the private side. We wouldn't have to pour all this money into our elementary schools for those pre-K expansions and that pre-K expansion at Freedom. But it may be worthwhile to see if we can, you know, pause and see if we can get the state to relax those Blueprint pre-K requirements. And of course, that would require your help on the side of Mako as well, lobbying for those pre-K requirements to be lessened and made. Just so we can have more local control on how we pour our capital dollars where, where we think it's needed best.
I hear what we're saying concerning Freedom and possibly putting a pause on things. I can just remember when we had a site visit as a board and when we heard directly from the principal and from the staff. Again, yes, they're making do their teaching and certainly doing a great job with the teaching. But they certainly shared some unfavorable conditions as far as the facility is concerned. So I would think that we'd certainly want to get some input again, you know, to hear instructionally some of the challenges that they're continuing to deal with, with their facility. I've acknowledged that we certainly need to do something to Freedom. The question might be when. But, you know, that, the whole challenge of that, that acreage there, the whole plot of land, I mean, it's just not ideal for a school. So I know even with coming up with, looking at a feasibility study to create a, an addition. It still didn't really, you know, solve the issue entirely because again, the site just isn't suitable. I think we need certainly more acreage and, you know, the whole nine yards. So, you know, maybe with a little more time, maybe we can create something that might be a little more ideal situation for Freedom. But again, let's not lose sight. Again, I hear we're saying that yes, they're making do with what they have. And sometimes, yes, we do make do, but if we can do better, I think we can certainly consider how we can, you know, better serve the students and the staff there.
And a big wrinkle with the whole Freedom Elementary situation is again, as you said, you know, in terms of sprinkler systems, no one expected it to be so expensive that it would be just poor water pressure, so forth. I wonder, I mean, that's, was it two, two million more because the sprinkler system?
1.3.
1.3. Is there some way we can get around that? I mean, if we're going to do a pause, what, what might be done? Does it have to have, all of the rooms have to have sprinkler systems that are constructed, you know, that sort of thing?
Yes, they do. There's, there's no way around that. The only way that, that it would improve is if the syst, if the pressure, overall pressure to the building was increased. That's the only way we'd be able to overcome it.
And to the, to the point of the site, you know, Commissioner Krebs pointed out a bit ago, Freedom, the original Freedom was built decades ago. We would not build a school on a site that small today. Actually, in the Educational Facilities Master Plan on page 3-14 are the board's current guidelines for, not, not a law, but the current guidelines for the size, the size site at each level. And I think elementary starts at 15 acres and then generally would increase by the volume of students. So you're looking at a nine acre site versus if we were building a, a new school today on a new site, it would be somewhere north of 15 acres to start. So, yeah, it's, and, and it's not the only school on a smaller site, but it's, it's not an ideal site. And it's not an ideal location with traffic and that sort of thing. There's no doubt about that.
The question I'd ask is if we did pause, you know, I'd love to see what we would do with those extra funds. Because we have schools that really need repair, schools that.
We have projects in line.
Yep.
There's never a lack of.
I just imagine what we could do, what else we could do with that money.
That's what we would start to look at.
Yep.
Ted is calculating now. He's opening his calculator.
Calculating the spread of the next Steelers game. Is that what you're doing?
Ted says, what money?
I guess I am, I am the, the opposite of the spectrum where I, I think to me, to go forward with the addition. And only because I had lived through my children going through a school who was on the plans to get repaired. And then it didn't happen and they got on the plans to get repaired and then it didn't happen. And then eventually it was like, oh, well, because the repairs never happened, we got to close your school. So I am completely different on that where I, I do think these two additions are needed for these two schools. To look at the modernizations of them and getting them repaired and fixed as needed along the way. And as well as looking at other schools that we do need to take care of. It was, there was a time, it was over 10 years ago, that, you know, schools did not get repairs as needed. And we saw the negative sides of that. And we need to continue making sure we are taking care of our schools. I mean, East Middle is a prime example of replacing a school only because it was on the same property. And we were, we were blessed by that part. If we didn't have that property, we probably would not have been able to replace it. So I, I do think I'm different than you guys. I'm sorry. But I do think we should move ahead with it.
And keep, keep in mind with Charles Carroll, it was a very small population of students and we had room at another school to absorb. We didn't, we didn't have room for a while. That's why they stayed open. And the parents said, just leave the building alone. It was never planned to be fixed up because we didn't have the water and sewer up there capacity. But the parents didn't want it to close and we didn't have room to put them anywhere. So they stayed an extra 20 years, I think. It's a long time. Charles Carroll stayed open with like 230 kids in it. And then the population started to decrease at Westminster Elementary, and I forget where else they sent them to, but they were able to be absorbed. But the, the school was never, never slated for renovation just because of the, the size of it being so small. And just, it was not practical because now we build schools for, I think the capacity was three something and they only had two something. This goes back a long time, but it's a little different. This is a school that we got to replace. I mean, it's 600 kids. So it, it can't be absorbed into something else easily. And some of the, you know, some of the parents back then wanted to move down because they wanted to be part of the, the bigger rec and parks. So there, there was half the people wanted it and half the people didn't. But it's a little bit different only because of the size and because, I mean, the same thing really, that we weren't going to add on to it and spend money on it. And they agreed with that. The parents didn't, didn't care at that point. They just said, leave us, leave us be.
I think school community wise, I mean, anybody that has a school in their community, they're going to, there, there is an attachment.
And that's good. That means they like their schools.
But and to me, I don't think enrollment should matter. A school community is a school community. Now is the hub for that community.
And President Pataglia, you mentioned the sort of the back and forth between modernization and systems. And then if nothing happens, the worst possible outcome. And I think, Mr. Whistler, you mentioned the comptrollers report and that's referenced on the agenda as well. Like to us, the, the two big takeaways we would have from the comptrollers report. And this has been a conversation that's been ongoing for a long time, maybe a bit in the background. The prior to the current director of the, the IAC or the Interagency Commission on School Construction. It was his quest in life to create a statewide facility condition index. It's not exactly the same as the one we use locally, but a, a, a similar tool as a, as a mechanism to show that between the backlog of inventory statewide and available funding, the, the backlog was growing. And then costs have escalated in, in a crazy way in the last few years. We, we saw that here locally. Others are seeing it. They build more than us. And so like the, our takeaways from that report would be the state CIP has been about $300 million for a long time. And that's generally the money that a, that a county like Carroll's competing for. What the state has done in recent years is added other pockets of money for specific purposes. But not increase the overall state CIP. And we benefited from that a little bit. East Middle was built with Built to Learn funding. So we're, it's not as if we haven't been able to, to reap some of those benefits. But in general, those kinds of funds don't apply to a Carroll as much as the traditional CIP will. And so if it's, if it's been 300 million for a long time and it's going to remain 300 million into the future and, and construction costs have escalated by 40.
42%.
42%. She has it in front of her. By 42% in the last five years, we're never going to get there as a state. And, you know, to President Pataglia's point, and you'll, these two boards will take this up as all boards before them have. Like right now, our number one prioritization for a modernization, which is a new building, either a brand new replacement building that you move to and tear the other one down. Or a new building that you fix in place like we've done with Career and Tech the last few years, is can we afford that? Between state funding and local funding, can we afford that, particularly now in light of 42% escalation? And so that'll be the board's priority unless you change the facility, facility condition index that we use. And it'll sit there as the first priority for modernization in your request. And can the commissioners ever fund that? And it, and if they can't, over time, and this is repeated, it's, this isn't just Liberty. Liberty is the example today. When I got here, it was Mount Airy Middle and East Middle. If ultimately the county is unable to fund it, then you have to say, okay, we, we probably need to give up on the dream of modernization and look at the systems of the building, the roof, the HVAC, the windows, the electric, the, you know, the systems that make it go. And sort of keep the building going that way. And, you know, in some cases, we were never able to do that and, and schools closed. So, you know, that's, I think that's actually on the agenda, but that's a whole different discussion. And then there's, there's, there's also embedded into that whole thought pattern around the comptrollers report is how much can the, can the state, even if the state will participate, how much cash flow can they send a year towards a $142 million project? Are we going to say to Ted, they'll eventually reimburse you and make you whole. But in the meantime, we need the cash to, to run this project through to completion. So if you would take out your calculator again, Ted, we. That, that's, I know that's a, a later agenda item, but it kind of fit in nicely to those two comments. That's sort of where we would, you know, what we would have to say about that whole state conversation, the comptrollers report, et cetera.
In that comptroller report, it said that 80% of the state's school system is, well, not satisfactory to, like not new. And so we're not listed as part of that 80% with that report. So how do we figure out exactly where Carroll County stands in that?
So they have their own metrics for their FCI. I wouldn't say we fully agree with their metrics, but they're their metrics. And so we say comparatively, we're in good shape to other systems.
Yeah. And, you know, we, we wonder about some of their designations. They've got three designations. One of them is needs repair. I, I, I don't know what that means. Every school, every building, every hat, needs repair. So I don't know, you know, I, I, we're still trying to figure out exactly. But that, that report is coming from one agency, from, information from another. And they're incorporating that in and we're, we are trying to figure out just where we do stand with the FCI. Because the FCI that they have in, right now, I believe is just the, is just the, is, is the, is the system's adequacy. It's the building itself. It's not the functional aspects. There's, as we do in, in our facilities master plan, we have a functional aspect to the schools that they, they, being the IAC, is supposed to incorporate. They haven't done it yet. It's been, let's just say it's taken longer than they said it would take. So we're still waiting to see how that component fits in and where that then, where the buildings rank with, with that in, included. So yes, I, I, I think the biggest thing we get out of that report is it's, it's just, it's verifying and it's acknowledging what we've already known. We've seen, the board has seen, which is we're bringing to you projects that get more and more expensive as we go very, very, very quickly. And so, you know, that's what we're taking from that. We're, we're still, like, like John said, they, they've sort of created their own metric on how the FCI is, not only the numbers, but what they, how they designate them.
But I would say comparatively, our capital program's in, in good shape. And if you, even in lean years, now we haven't modernized a lot of buildings in the last 20 years, but we have done a lot of systems. We've done a lot of roofs. We've done some HVACs. We, we've been doing things over the years. If you take the example I was using of, do you modernize a school or can you not do it? And do you look at systems? If you, you get a county, and I'll say this because I'm from there and hope, hopefully no one I know will be angry at me. But you get a small, like a Eastern Shore County like Caroline or Dorchester or Somerset or. If they could redo, if they could modernize a single school, a high school, a middle school in their county, all of their capital money would go there for years. And there would be no money to do a roof or an HVAC or any kind of project like that. You know, rebuilding, and I don't know for sure. So I'm just, I shouldn't have used an actual county name. But rebuilding a, a middle school, a brand new middle school in one of those counties might shut down the rest of their capital program for, for six or seven years. If that's how long it took for the state to, to fund its share out over time. We haven't been in that situation here.
Can I ask a question about another one of the agenda items regarding the new school sites? Who initiates and which schools might need a new site? So I'd like to learn more about how that process folds out, unrolls.
So if it's a, if it's a future site for a future school, a new school, typically the county government would, and it's, is it a 10-year cycle for your master plan? Would be looking, in its 10-year master plan cycle, we might need, we, you know, we might need additional school capacity. And the county would look for, look to meet that need by, you know, identifying it and potentially purchasing land. The Board of Ed can't really purchase land. The Board of Ed can't really purchase land. And then they would hold that land in reserve for such time as we need a school. If it's an existing school, we follow the state construction process. So, like, let's say Freedom, let's say we were gonna modernize Freedom, not, not add an addition, but modernize Freedom. We always begin with a feasibility study, which is a review by a qualified architectural and engineering firm. And they would say, yes, you can, or no, you can't modernize this building on this site. And then if we got to a place where we, where we had a school that was the priority to modernize and our feasibility study came back and said, you can't do it here, we would approach the county to say, you know, next up is school whatever. Feasibility study is saying we can't modernize on that site. Did I misspeak?
I was just shifting.
Oh. Ray made a sound. And can we have a conversation about, with you about identifying some alternative site? And, you know, the board owns some property, but at one time, whether, this is a real one. The modern, or the feasibility study for modernizing Career and Tech had two options. One was to modernize Career and Tech as it was, which is what we did. A second option was to build Career and Tech at the Freedom, at the...
Friendship.
Friendship Valley property. Because we, the Board of Ed owns most of that property, so there was space there. And then that gets into, well, what's the impact on Wreckin Parks and other things? There's, you know, all of those factors come into it.
John, the reason I put that on there, we've made some good sites select, I say we, I think the county has made some really good site selections and they've made ones that are too late and you can't get your pick of the property. So years ago, we had school sites that were identified. Some was because they'd give density to a community and they'd say, give us a school site. And then we'd get Piney Ridge Elementary. So we got a substandard school site because they were able to put more houses on more property and then we built the school there. Wasn't ideal because it doesn't have field space, so it wasn't, you know, for thirty years, forty years, you're gonna have a school with no fields. Wasn't necessarily the best idea. If you're not gonna get something that's really gonna be, it's gonna be a benefit, it's probably better to wait and do. We probably could've bought a new school site and gotten more out of it than the property we were given. Because it cost us, I think, back then, years ago, like eight hundred thousand dollars to fill it in. And I remember Lester Cerber when that happened. Ray, you weren't even here yet for Piney Ridge, I don't think. But my point is, we gotta make sure we're getting a good school site that helps with the Wreckin Parks and helps with what we need. Because three of our school sites in, in our area, the Freedom District, don't have any field space. So you have Freedom, you have Piney Ridge, and you got Carrolltown. Just because, and Carrolltown was part of a planned unit development, not sure why. That's got a little bit more, but there's no, there's not enough field space to have your Wreckin Parks there. It's not, it's not used for that. So we wanna make sure that we, we have limited space. And I think the towns have limited space, but, because everything's gotta be built with water and soil now, ever since, you know, two thousand, whatever. We need to identify them sooner than later or they don't, not gonna exist. So right now in Freedom, almost everything in the Freedom District is, we have three large parcels, I think, that could accommodate, I don't know of any others, in that district, and they're all getting built on. So I started asking a number of years ago, you know, how do we identify something before there's nowhere to put it? Because you can't replace it on its own site. And some you can. I mean, we did that with Mount Airy, we did it with East Middle. So, you know, that's something to think about, but some of these you can't replace on its own site. So that's why I was asking a few years ago about what, future replacement for Freedom Elementary. And nobody sort of seemed to know who was supposed to initiate it. And I read somewhere it's maybe the Planning Commission, well, they don't really know either. So we just wanna formalize somehow, how do we make sure we're looking ten years ahead or fifteen years ahead to make sure in certain areas, some areas it doesn't matter. Like I said, they could replace somewhere else. But looking down that list of possible replacements or future school sites for new construction, we used, like Oklahoma Road was there for years as a Wreckin Parks fields for when I moved here. And then it got built as a school site. So someone had the foresight years and years ago to put that site there, but then that took away, there's a little bit of field space extra there. But I don't know how that all happened and we just need to formalize it. You know, I think it was more of an informal process many, many years ago between the planning director from many years ago and the, and the school facility people, but it's never been memorialized, those people leave and then everybody thinks someone else is doing it. So just wanna make sure, you know, we have a conversation about, I mean, Century was done well. You know, they picked sites for Linton and Century and for, that was supposed to be a future Career and Tech or middle school. And now we're turning it into Employment Campus. But hopefully we won't need it for something else. But it'd be nice to, you know, that's the, that was the intention when it was bought. But just to have that idea, because the property isn't, there's not that many properties to consider. So just between you and the planning director, just be nice to formalize who, like, starts to identify it and when. Doesn't mean you're gonna buy it that day, but maybe when things come up or pursue them as things come available, we should have it on our radar screen. Just like for Freedom right now, you can't replace it on its own. You can't, you shouldn't modernize it, modernize it, and you can't replace it on its own site. So we have to move it.
And we were spoiled with East Middle because that site was big enough to build a new school and keep them in school and you had the option of friendship.
Correct.
You know, not too many places in the county you have those kind of options.
Mount Airy, similar. They were able to build it next door.
And the configuration of North Carroll Middle allowed us to modernize within, within that footprint. But that's, that was a unique configuration.
And that was a nice school site, so you wanted to keep, it was an old high school. So if you have a good school site, you wanna keep it.
Yeah.
But, I mean, if you don't have a good school site, you don't wanna build good on, something that's not working, so. Just think about that, because I just, not just for who's sitting here today, but five years from now, you know, when we need something, how do we look forward to what we may need? And I think it's nice to have a larger, in the future, I know, up in Pennsylvania, they put like their libraries on the same property and their mills, they put campuses of things, you can always add things to it and then they're all in one spot. And it's sort of like, like what happened at Century and Linton was, worked out very nicely.
We're gonna run out of time. Do you guys wanna cheer about lights?
No. We would love to cheer about lights. Yeah, I'll, well, before I have John talk about the specifics, I'll just say that, you know, when we found out about the light situation, we were all very surprised that a report came back saying that the stadia at both Liberty and Westminster High were dangerous to have people in because those stadium light poles could fall. We never anticipated getting, we thought we would get a report back that said, you know, you need to strengthen this post or, you know, we recommend replacing in one to two years. But we never anticipated getting that back. And, and when we did, we thought, the first thing we thought is, there is no way we can give up this whole season for our students, no way. So, you know, our goal was to get something in there very quickly. And our first thought was, well, maybe we can get some temporary lighting to put in there until we got the permanent, the new permanent lighting. And gosh darn, our guys tried to get that in and they did. And we went out there and it didn't light anything up. I mean, it was, it was, it was not only not ideal, we just could not have, have kids, kids playing in the dark, people, you know, trying to observe the game. It just wasn't well lit at all. And so at that point, we knew we had to get the permanent lighting in as quickly as possible. And I'm so grateful to our staff who were able to, were able to procure lighting and get it in. And basically, we are ready to go already for the Friday night game at Liberty. The lights are in, tested, everything. And I think the same for Westminster is true today or tomorrow.
The testing tonight will be done tomorrow, but the game at Liberty is tonight. It's a Thursday night under the light.
Tonight, that's right, yeah.
So it's between Liberty and Westminster High.
Yeah.
So it gives us one extra day to get the testing done at Westminster High.
So how did you work out that Westminster would play Liberty, so you only need one?
It's a little bit ironic, isn't it?
It was fortuitous and, yeah, definitely.
So our folks and, you know, Ray's leadership, Mr. Joe Morningstar, who's our supervisor of facilities and maintenance that typically doesn't, you know, Joey wouldn't be at board meetings, and our assistant supervisor, Mr. Dave Valentine, who used to work for the county, so we thank you for sending, sending Dave our way. Dave Oversold is our project manager within, we spent maybe a day trying to figure out, is there some other interim solution we could put in place? Could we regrow them? Could we put guy wires on? Is there anything we could do to get through the season? And when we realized we couldn't find an interim solution that wouldn't take longer than a permanent solution, the superintendent said, do, do what you have to do, get it done. So Ray and Joey and Dave were able to find, find the folks we needed and the, and the resources we needed. And just in a couple of weeks, well, first of all, they had the poles that were in question on the ground within twenty-four hours so that the stadia could be reopened for use, just not lighted. And a couple of weeks after that, all eight poles are up, four at each stadium. The lights are installed and wired. At Liberty, they've been tested because these are not the lights from my youth, these are...
Say, these aren't a Band-Aid.
These are, these are high, high-end, the newest, you know.
You can, you can work them from your phone.
Yeah. They came...
Not everybody can work them.
Not us.
We're gonna restrict them.
If you go out and stand on them, you can see the, you know, they have a magical computer-generated certain amount of lights per structure and they're all angled to cover, you know, each one covers its designated section of the field. That's what they come out and test, they're LED, they have a forty thousand, fifty thousand hour life. And if they have to be replaced someday, you can just replace that component, that LED component, which is very small and light, surprisingly. And they can be controlled by panel or device. And so they could be programmed in advance, instant on, instant off, low, medium, high. They could theoretically, an athletic director, a principal could do the, set up the year on, on December, whatever, turn them on at four PM at low and change them to medium at five and high at six and turn them off at nine. It's that kind of technology now.
And they're, they're much safer from the standpoint that all the controls, the LEDs are the only thing that's up in the air. So there's no catwalks, there's no reason each year to go up to those anymore. All the control, all the, all the components are down low. So a step ladder will get our folks in there if there's any, if there's any need for repairs. And it helped a lot that Wreckin Parks has recently put in Musco Lights in a number of facilities. So we were able to do, the morning after we heard there was the possibility that these things could be, you know, three weeks turnaround on this, we were able to get out and see them firsthand, so we were able to do that. And I spoke with, with your director, I keep...
Bob Hicks.
What's that?
Bob Hicks.
Bob Hicks, yeah, I keep wanting to say Jeff, Jeff.
He was there a long time.
Around too long. And so they were, everyone seemed to, you know, gave great reviews on the, on the installation and the performance. So that was a big help to be able to get past, you know, that hurdle, what normally could take quite a while to do reference checks. The county has already installed some of these in their, in their parks, so that was, that was a big help with Bob.
And I can't say enough about Dave Valentine. Dave worked literally three AM to ten PM several days with our crews, the crews we had in, otherwise getting this done. And they did it. And it looks great.
It does.
All right. Do we have time to go over this item, cursive, financial literacy and reading, possibly?
It depends on what the question, we have, we've got about seven minutes, so...
I'll put that on there, so I'll do it very quickly. I'll start with the financial literacy. I know we have financial literacy, I was a big proponent of that. I started on a housing work group this spring and summer through the county and one of the recommendations that's gonna come out, it was about financial literacy. And I said, well, we already have it. But the question is, are we, are we teaching the components that they believe we need for students understanding about affordability of housing and rentals and what? So I'm just bringing it up very quickly because it's gonna come out as a recommendation. So it's easy to say, yeah, we have financial literacy. But these issues that we're trying to get students to start thinking about is, what are they gonna need for, you know, housing costs? What are they, so I'm not sure if that's part of the program anymore or...
It is, yes.
So I just wanna let you know.
It's still a graduation, it's a half-credit course that we require. It's an added graduation credit to what the state requires us to do, but still very much a part of our, of our instruction.
Okay. And the reading, and thank you for that, just, and maybe you can make a comment back when the, when the report comes out of what we're doing, we can maybe, you could talk about it at a board meeting, maybe somebody gets some notes on it and put it in the paper.
Amplify it.
Amplify it, because it's important to show that, you know, what kinds of things we're, we're teaching our kids. The reading part came from a, somebody I communicated last week at the ARC event that we were at. It has to do with reading. And this, they were helping a student that was a senior in high school and was at a third-grade reading level. And my question is, what, are we making sure that our kids, and the kid is graduating, how are we making sure that our kids are not graduating and not, are reading? Because we have a reading policy that was put in place a long time ago. And this, it was not a multi-language learner. So how are we assuring that our kids are not getting pushed through the system and not being able to reach those benchmarks and read?
I'll start and then I'll let Mr. Shockney take over. But, you know, for some of our students, some of our students receive services because they're disabled. So for students who, who may have a disability, they may graduate from high school reading on a grade level that, you know, is, is much less than, than what our other populations do. However, you know, for our general population, we expect our students to be able to read at grade level each year. Now, the state, with Dr. Wright coming in as our new state superintendent, she's putting in a policy that all students have to be able to read on grade level by third grade, which is what we've, you know, always said here. And if they can't, then we need to put in, if they can't read on grade level by third grade, then we have to put in different intervention plans that show what we're doing to make sure that we are intervening and that the student can read on grade level very quickly. So I think with what we already have done historically and what the state superintendent is doing, I think that will only strengthen. Plus, we're starting, we're starting a new program for our, for reading in grades K through five, revised curriculum and new resources, Benchmark Advance. And so that's much more, much more aligned with our curriculum. And I think, you know, that with our, with our focus on phonics and our foundations program will only strengthen our reading program. Mr. Shockney?
No, you said it perfectly, Dr. McCabe. Lots of attention around the science of reading in recent years. We are a system that had already, always had been using the science of reading.
Well, we used to do whole language.
Well, for, for a long time, yes. But, but we have, we have been explicit in the instruction of phonics and phonetic awareness prior for many a years here. So it's, it's a welcome, it's not a big transition for us in any way. We've had staff engage in lots of professional learning. We've had some good work come from the state in that area, which is good. And that training has been helpful and beneficial. So we're taking what we're doing, we're enhancing it further with a significant investment in additional instructional materials to support the science of reading. And then there'll be greater, we've always had checks and balances, but because of the state's reading policy, there'll be greater checks and balances along the way. There was a discussion around, there was, retention was a part of that in the earlier part of the, of the state's policy that was revised. But that will still be obviously a discussion point that, that we have as well. But obviously, you know, something that we're gonna continue to work at, we always, always strive to do better. We have a number two ranking in the state when it comes to our performance on the MCAP and reading. And number two is great, but we wanna be number one as well. And then even just continue to grow and improve every year as well.
Thank you. And the person that brought to my attention was part of the reading, no, reading coalition. He helps, helped people read. I don't know the circumstances of the student, we just, you know probably who I'm talking about. He's been, I think we all are very passionate about reading on grade level by third grade. And this county is, that's why we do so well on our standardized test. And I do believe, and that's one thing I agree with the superintendent on a hundred percent, is her passion about that. So thank you for reiterating that, but I'll have to find out the circumstance, I'm not sure.
Educators too.
And the cursive, I asked that question because I had, there was a big article in Wall Street Journal last week about cursive and how it's good for your brain development and all these other things. And even California's bringing it back, so I didn't know if we had, so, back or not. Go ahead.
Part of our, part of our curriculum in grades three, four, and five and our foundations, which is our explicit instruction in phonics. So there's that integration of the cursive with our phonics instruction, part of the curriculum, grades three, four, five.
Good.
Anecdote, oh.
I said, Dr. Dorsey told me years ago, it's, it's not that hard, it doesn't take that long. You just need to put it in the...
Well, we would spend fifteen or twenty minutes a day teaching cursive and the kids loved it. And I think another addition, you know, that sort of plays into this is that we're also looking at the science of writing as well. So integrating the science of writing with the science of reading, I mean, I think it really will be helpful for our kids.
Sorry, Kristen.
Oh, no, that's okay. I was just gonna, on a personal note, I'm very pleased to see my fourth grader bringing home his cursive ditto's every day.
I saw you on Facebook.
I saw you on Facebook.
When I attempted to throw them away, he stopped me and said, I need those as resources.
Very good.
So, I am very impressed with our teachers at Carroll County Public Schools.
Very good.
That's good. We do a lot of stuff right here. I just like to reaffirm it, because I've been, and I'm sorry I put so much stuff on the agenda, but the reason I put geothermal on there, and Ray can help us, I know we did it at several schools, and part of the discussion we're having is boards of commissioners all around the state, local governments, is about different types of energy. And we talk about solar, we talk about wind, we talk about things, but we also have the geothermal. And I never really followed up on the successes of it, how has that worked out, has it saved us money? Is it considered a renewable energy, is, does it count for renewable energy credits? Do you know?
Oh, whether it counts for renewable energy credits, I, I don't know.
We can find that out. So, how has it worked?
Yeah, when, the last evaluation we did, we don't have an energy manager in Carroll County, we've got other positions we need filled, we're, there's, there's a number of counties that have energy managers and have energy management groups, actually. But the last time we looked, we did some comparisons with, with our traditional systems, our, you know, and the, the geothermals were in the neighborhood of, of 20 to 30-some percent more efficient. The payback on any additional cost at the time was estimated to be between four and eight years. Geothermal tends to be more expensive first-time cost, because of all the, the drilling, the borings that have to occur. But, but other than that, that, yes, we're seeing, we're seeing, we saw at that time, the last time we, we analyzed it, that we were getting the energy savings or the cost avoidance. But even more than that, the geothermal is heat pumps scattered throughout the building, so there's a redundancy there. If we're going to lose a, a heat pump, we're only losing a classroom. If we lose a chiller, we could lose a school, so, so there's that advantage, and also with the multiple heat pumps throughout the school, you tend to have better, better conditions throughout the school.
Did you do it at East Middle School?
East was, was, is not geothermal. It's a matter, the, the issue with, not the issue, but geothermal's dependent on the amount of site you have, and also the site condition, so you have to drill, you have to determine that geologically you can transfer the heat that you have to...
I talked about it a lot when we did it.
Into weeds here now.
But I never followed up, I never really followed up to see how successful, but it's something, if it's something successful and you ever want to share it with us, so we have some talking points, we're trying, I'm trying to say, and we did it at the library, Finksburg Library, the county did, it's just some, some things the county has done toward energy efficiency.
We're, we're leaning towards it for Northwest Middle, that's, that'll be the next geothermal project.
And, and I think you did it in Mount Airy, and I was, I was going to ask, you've, you've pretty much addressed it, I walked around the school, and I saw these little closets, I didn't know what the heck was in them, but that helps you with maintenance because of the redundancy, so that's, that's not higher maintenance, that's a help.
Yes, that, we, what we can do with those, they're usually about a ton or a ton and a half size heat pump, which is not too much larger than what you would have at your house in terms of compressor size, so if it fails, we can disconnect it, pull it, put another one in, and have that one repaired while we're still up and running in, in the space. So, there's a lot of advantages to it. Took a bit of getting used to, been learning on the, on the maintenance side, that this is a completely different type of system, but it's, it's effective, and as I say, it's also very, from a comfort standpoint, you can heat and cool as needed, so if our spaces are, you know, have a lot of computers in them, they, they have a lot of folks in them, that space can be cooling while you might be heating a space on the exterior of the building, for instance.
That's a big deal. Thank you, thank you for, that's a very big deal, so it's, the difference in temperature in some of the, your schools is huge. We've skipped over some of these systemic projects, the roofing and paving back, project backlogs, and the track and lights, lights, we talked about the lights at Westminster and Liberty, but the track replacements, someone was telling me that tracks need to be replaced again. I say again, we replaced them 25, is that only, is that true or not?
We're, at this point, and Liberty seems to be the focal point of my whole life recently, but, but Liberty was, we, we had to repair the tracks at Liberty at a, a very effective cost this past summer, so that's back up to, up to grade, up to speed, and the comprehensive maintenance plan that's coming for the board in a couple of weeks will have, has a cycle in it for tracks, has a cycle in it for pretty much all, all of our systems, paving and, and whatnot.
So, the tracks are, they're not in bad shape?
The tracks are, are, I believe are in terrific shape.
Okay. So, repair was done at Liberty?
So, the repairs were done at Liberty, and we, we upgraded the, the others, so we are, we're where we need to be with track service.
And they're on a plan to, okay, that's good.
Uh-huh. They're always, they're on a cycle, we'll, you know, it's about every 10 years, give it, give or take.
And you're satisfied with roofing and paving on, on the cycle that we're on?
Yes. The paving, we've eliminated most of the worst-case conditions, the failed paving that we would have found in the past, we're no longer finding, we're at the point now where we're paving in a, in a cycle to coordinate with a lot of our construction work. So, we're doing so many additions all over the place, the last thing we want to do is have construction equipment going over new paving, so what we'll do is, we will cycle those in as, as that allows. And the roofing, we're on the last two single-ply roofing systems that we have, and when we hit Century, it'll be the end of my career. Go Century on the way in, and I'm going to put the roof on, and then I'm telling John, I'm going. So, no, so we have, we're, we're down to the last few single-ply roofs, which gave us the most difficulty. We're pretty much built-up roofs throughout the, throughout the system.
Do you want to summarize? Are we okay with time? You, you avoided introductions, that's why we got done quicker.
Well, I thought we all knew each other, and since I introduced Susan as a, as a new commissioner, I thought, thought we were in good shape, but, yeah, I think, you know, I think we've gotten a lot accomplished today, especially the conversation around the CIP, and I think that puts our board members in a great place to be able to, to think about and make a decision for the October board meeting, so, so, yeah, I think, I think we are concluded.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for your input.
Thank you.